Let the record show that all members are present except Vice Chair Joanne Osborne. Are we expecting her?
She's coming.
She's coming, okay.
She's just left.
Okay. First item on our agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes of the special meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission held on August 16th, 2006. That was the regular meeting, wasn't it?
Right.
Regular meeting, okay. You have the minutes before you. Were there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I have two comments on minutes that I'd like to make. Concerning the August 2nd meeting, I would like to publicly thank the chairman, Mr. Horstman, for supporting my position on tall buildings with the city center plan. And concerning the August 16th meeting, I would like to formally thank Commissioner Osborne for ensuring that the hog rendering plant and the crematorium have a position near the landfill in the Sonoran Valley when and if that happens. Those are my comments on the meeting.
Aren't you cute?
I'm back and I've watched the meetings.
Let the record show that Vice Chair Osborne has joined us. One more day is?
And I'll move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 16th.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is public comments. If you would like to speak to any of the cases this evening, we'd ask you to fill out a card so that we will know who would like to speak. By no means exclusive, if you decide that you'd like to speak, even though you didn't fill out a card, we'll certainly give you that opportunity. And if there's anyone that would like to address the commission on anything not on the agenda, we would invite you to do that at this time. Hearing none. Next item is disclosure of ex parte communications. Is there any commissioner that would like to report ex parte communications? I did meet with Mr. Jones and Karen Keith regarding the Wood Corporate Center on Monday, and would like to disclose that. Any other? Okay, then we'll move on to new business. Case 06-200-00003, Estrella Commons rezone, public hearing to consider request to rezone 180 acres generally located at the southeast corner of Estrella Parkway in Interstate 10 from the agricultural urban AU District to the preliminary planned area development PAD District to allow 45 acres of medium-high-density residential and 100 acres of low-medium-density residential. The applicant is Ed Bull of Birch and Cracchiolo. And staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'll begin with some background information regarding the site. The aerial that I put on the overhead is obviously to some quite dated, but still I use it to create kind of a contextual map in relation to the situation of this particular site. The site being presented to you is, as you mentioned, about 180 acres. To the southeast is the single-family neighborhood known as Rancho Mirage. To the southwest, although you don't see any building footprints here, is Estrella Crossroads, which is a general commercial development currently under construction. A few of the retail establishments have already been completed. Directly across the street is another commercial development that is currently being graded before actual vertical construction, and that is Parkway Village. And of course, we have Walmart as well across the street to the west, as well as the Safeway Center. I mentioned Estrella Crossroads. The applicant, who has interest in this particular project, also came before you several months ago for another project, a proposed project known as Goodyear Center Point, located north of, just north, across from Interstate 10. As you mentioned, the applicant is proposing a rezoning from its current designation, which is agricultural urban. As for the general plan designations, and this is page 5-5 in the PAD booklets, which I've attached in my staff report. The general plan designations are such. 30 acres is designated for a community commercial. We have 100 acres for low-medium-density residential, which is anywhere between 4 to 60 in a city acre, and 50 acres for medium-high-density residential. So the applicant is proposing a rezone, as I mentioned. There's actually two components to this rezone. Part of the proposal before you is a rezone from the current designation, designation which I mentioned is agricultural urban, to a final PAD area. There's another rezoning proposal for the preliminary PAD area, which is about 30 acres. The difference between these two designations, or I should say, these two project areas, is that the final PAD area includes exclusively the residential portion of this development known as Estrella Commons. The preliminary PAD area will be more of the mixed-use component to this development, which will include commercial, some office, retail, and some ancillary residential component to that as well. There's a greater level of detail provided in this PAD packet for the final PAD area, which the staff found acceptable. Whereas for the preliminary PAD area, we would need a little bit more detail to rezone that area to a final PAD, and that should be coming forward after approval of the preliminary So what the applicant is proposing, excuse me, is a mixed residential and commercial development. And incidentally, this is the conceptual master plan on page 5-6 in the zoning ordinance, known as Estrella Commons. The area in purple, which is about 30 acres, which constitutes the preliminary PAD portion of this proposal, is the commercial component, as I spoke to you about, and that will be known as the district. The remainder of the area, which entails the final PAD portion, is a mixed residential, which, as you'll see later, includes single-family detached and detached, as well as some multifamily The conceptual lotting plan, or the conceptual master plan that you see before you, shows 1,200 units, residential units, for this development, which is at about 6.6 units to the acre. However, the overall density for this project will be capped at 8.3 units to the acre. If you look at pages 6-2 and 6-3 of the attached PAD packet, what you'll find is there's about 11 different types of housing products proposed for this development geared towards a more traditional neighborhood type of development. There's a diverse palette of housing products being offered. I mentioned some of them generally, but there will be characteristics such as the two-pack type of orientation, which I'll later defer to the applicant to explain these products a little further, but also the townhomes and the row towns, or if I'm saying it correctly, the row town, which is kind of a brownstone type of residential unit. And this, page 5-7, kind of shows you how these housing products would be distributed throughout the development. And this map can be kind of cross-reference with the two that I spoke to you about earlier on page 6-2. But what I should note here is that the lower-density products, particularly the type that is labeled 1R, which is a single-family detached, would be generally concentrated to the south over by the existing residential development, that being Rancho Mirage. The multifamily component will be further to the northeast, and that is fairly consistent with the general plan, which designates this area to the northeast as medium-high-density residential. And of course, I mentioned the, excuse me, the commercial component to the west. Page 5-10 kind of shows you the overall open space framework for this development. There's about 17 and a half acres that would be earmarked, that would be dedicated open space, which is over, a little over 11% of the project area. This includes the central open space known as the Village Green, and it would also include other active and passive open space locations as well. The streets, I'll just show you the circulation map. The streets within this development would be entirely private. They would be maintained by the developer. If you'd like, you could take a look at the appendix of this PAD packet, which shows the cross-sections and how they deviate from the engineering design standards. But it's, you'll notice that the streets are designed to kind of promote that traditional neighborhood element that this development is proposing. I should, incidentally, I should mention that there would be three ingress, egress points in this development, one of which is currently existing at Roosevelt in Estrella Parkway, and currently there's a signal there right now. And stipulation 32, which I could point out later, implies that there would be a signal located at the proposed street, tentatively named A Street, at Estrella Parkway, and there would be a stop sign placed at the southern ingress-egress at Van Buren Street. Phasing would, the phasing would generally occur in two phases. The first would include the construction of the infrastructure in Phase 1, or I should say, the final PAD area, which is the residential component. As for the actual housing products, and when they would be constructed, that would be dependent on market conditions at the time. And the second phase would entail the preliminary PAD area, which is the commercial component known as the district, as I said earlier. There was a citizen review meeting conducted on August 22nd where a number of residents, about five or six residents, had attended primarily from the Rancho Mirage neighborhood. There were a few concerns, which I've explained in the staff report, and they were addressed by the applicant. So I should say at this point that staff is recommending approval of this pre-PAD and final PAD proposal contingent on the 34 stipulations before you. I should mention at this point, earlier before the meeting today, staff and the applicant took another look at a few of the stipulations, particularly stipulation 17, 19, 21, and 34. Let me just start with 24. All that happened there, excuse me, 34. What happened there was there was some extraneous information in that stipulation that got repeated, and so I've struck out that language. As for stipulations 17 and 21, the original stipulations that are in the packet are boilerplate stipulations that usually apply to single-family detached plats. These standard stipulations wouldn't allow the flexibility to provide the types of housing that this development would be proposing, particularly the two-pack and a lot of the townhome and row town housing products that are proposed. So that language, the languages for 17 and 21 were modified. And for, I should also mention that stipulation 19 was also revised to clearly indicate what the minimum requirement for noise abatement was, or noise abatement is for this type of development. And this stipulation number 19 is basically derived from the zoning ordinance. That basically concludes my comments. The applicant is here as well to provide you some more information, particularly about the housing products if you need, but I'm available to take any questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Farhood. Any questions of staff? Ms. Lorretta?
I just have a question. With regard to the Bullard Wash area, is that going to be fenced in, or is it going to be open so that there's some ingress and egress to that, flow into that area that they're redoing?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and the applicant, correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as I know, it is to be enclosed, but there will be some access provided to Bullard Wash from the development.
Ms. Osborne?
Unless I missed it, I didn't catch the open space percentage and if that was taken care of within here.
Yeah, the open space percentage, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Osborne, is at 11%. So 17 and a half acres, and that's just dedicated open space alone.
I did see the 11%. Is that what?
Is that adequate?
Yeah.
That meets the, that actually exceeds the minimum requirements for open space for this type of development.
And does that include the pool area?
I believe so.
So will that pool be, maybe for the applicant, pool will then be community pool for everyone?
It will be a community pool to be used by the residents within this development.
And regarding the two-story homes, stipulation, actually hit on it, I think with 22, 21, no more than three two-stories homes side by side. Usually we follow that with the, you know, two-one stories. Is that not applying here because there's not a whole lot? From the package, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of one-story type of homes. Is that why this isn't in here?
If you look further on that, number 21, it does make reference to the areas that are, I guess, where the underlying land use for residential designation is 1R, and that is, those are the more, dare I say, more of the conventional type of single-family detached where this particular stipulation can be applied to.
Okay. So a percentage of really this whole development is pretty much two-story because of all the two-packs, four-packs, multi, and then?
Correct.
Thank you.
You mentioned that all the streets were private streets as our fire department. I'm assuming that the streets are built to city standards, at least to be able to get emergency vehicles through?
Correct. And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsor, that was discussed to some extent, and with engineering along with the fire department, and they have allowed the minimum 20-foot clearance for emergency vehicles in the alleys as well, not just the private streets.
That was where I was going with that on the alleys. And then the second question is, and this maybe we'll save for the applicant, they talk about a phasing plan where Phase 1 will consider the infrastructure of the residential neighborhoods and all the final PAD areas, and then Phase 2 will consider the infrastructure to support the preliminary PAD areas. When and what is the timetable for, I thought I read something that the single-family houses were going to be developed first and then we were going to move along, but I wasn't sure how the phasing was going to work on this.
Yeah, probably a good idea to defer that to the applicant.
Okay, we will. Works for me. Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Bay?
Kind of follow-up on Mr. Gelsor's question about private streets. In previous requests, we've always asked for a stipulation that informs the home purchaser that these streets are not city standards and that those responsibilities will be those of the developer, or my understanding is it becomes the associations or the residents' requirements to maintain that street once they've moved in there. So we typically have a stipulation for that, but I don't see that in here. Is that because they do meet city, streets meet city standards, and the city would be willing to take them over? No?
Chairman Horstman, Commissioner Bay, quite honestly, I'm not familiar with that stipulation.
Okay.
But that's something that's usually indicated in the CCNRs. We hope they're told upfront that they'd be responsible for maintaining the streets and whatever infrastructure is intended to be privately maintained.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, we can add that stipulation. I have a question.
Regarding the existing commercial, as I remember, the last pad that was on the east side of the existing commercial is the car wash, right?
I don't believe so, no.
It wasn't the car wash?
Not that I recall.
Entire store, it's waiting there. Was it had been here?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Broker, I was just reminded, the Estrella Crossroads development to the south, right at the corner there at Van Buren Estrella Parkway, there is a Fletcher, excuse me, my throat's going dry, Fletcher Auto and Tire is currently under construction, assumed to be under construction as of due to time.
Okay. Well, the question I was getting at was, whatever the situation is there, should the houses that are abetting that commercial be flat to the east and have the road go up that side for noise abatement?
Commissioner Broker, a couple of years ago, the Estrella, when the Estrella Crossroads development came before the commission, we did explore some options as far as mitigating the proximity of these two uses, and I believe what we stipulated for Estrella Crossroads is that there'd be at least some 36-inch box trees planted between Estrella Crossroads and this development, although there were no stipulations addressing any rows.
So there isn't a noise problem for the residences that are next to, adjacent to the commercial?
I wouldn't anticipate that, but the, one of the stipulations, and that being stipulation 19, the revised stipulation 19, we are, we would be requiring the developer to construct those homes in a manner in which any, you know, extraneous noise doesn't exceed 45 decibels, which is the minimum standard for the city.
Okay. I'm multi-expressing a concern.
Sure.
I really like this project, and the only concern that I have is if you have residences immediately adjacent to a tire distributor, repair, and rotation, et cetera, there's going to be quite a bit of noise associated with that. And I only raise the question, is it possible to move that street off of Van Buren to the desk, flip the houses next to the residences at the existing Rancho Mirage? So you have residence to residence rather than residence to the backside of a facility. And that's the only question I raised.
Good question. Let's go ahead. Okay. I have one question. The Village Green, is any part of that for water retention purposes?
Correct, yes, it is.
Okay. So the area to the west of the pool is for retention?
Correct.
It's turf and for retention, and when it's dry, it's available for play fields and?
Right, although I'm not sure how much of it is to remain high and dry.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Farhood. Mr. Bull?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Ed Bull, 702 East Osborne. I'm here on behalf of Evergreen. Evergreen, as you know, has a couple divisions under their umbrella, both a commercial division and a residential division that worked very well to marry them together on this particular development. You're familiar with Evergreen and other things that they've done throughout the valley, things that they've zoned and have under construction here in the city, so I think you probably don't need additional introduction with respect to Evergreen and their interest in quality. Very clearly, Evergreen and staff have worked hand and glove on pulling a lot of pieces of the puzzle together on this particular development. We appreciate staff's recommendation. We appreciate staff's recommendation. We certainly accept staff stipulations, one through thirty-four with the modifications that Farhad just went over with you here this evening. In essence, as Farhad recapped for you, this is, it's a creative, vibrant, mixed-use community that brings a lot of things together on this site and does it in a manner with appropriate transitions from the southeast to the northwest, and does it in a location which, and in a manner which is very consistent with your general plan and we hope with the city's vision for this particular piece. We do request your approval in accordance with staff's recommendation and those thirty-four stipulations for the modifications. You have a complete book. You have a complete staff report. I think Farhad went through a detailed presentation with you. There's two or three questions in there, I think, that kind of got deferred to me a little bit that I'll address, but other than that, do you want me to make a full presentation? Because I don't want to single acquire at the same time. I don't want to skip over a presentation if you need one.
If it's not you, Mr. Bull, I would really like to hear from the proposed builders or who's going to be the residential developer. I know Evergreen DevCo's going to do the master, the whole thing. I want to, I want to hear from who's building the houses, or at least hear some, something more than I've read.
Okay. All right. Let me touch on some of the questions and then circle back to that as well, if I may, and I won't go into a full-blown presentation, but we can fill in as many gaps as you need to along the way between either my comments or people here from Evergreen or from, from one of our planners, Ron Crater, who's here, who's very versant in this type of development as well. With respect to a question that was asked about private streets and, and, you know, making sure people know that they're private streets and if they ever wanted them to become public streets and that type of thing, it's already touched on to some extent in Stipulation Twenty-three. In addition to that, though, I think Harvey indicated that staff could add a stipulation saying that we disclose that they're private streets. We have no problem with that additional stipulation. Obviously, we'd shown that way on the plat. It could be shown that way in the CCNR, so that's, that's no issue at all. With respect to the question about whether or not there's a car wash in the, in the commercial development that's already underway, no, there's not. With respect to the Fletcher, which is under construction, that is located substantially to the west of the eastern property line of that commercial development, so it's substantially west of the residential site that we're talking about here. In addition to that, as you may recall from a couple of years ago, more or less when we were here, as I recall on that commercial corner, the commercial corner has obviously building setbacks along the east property line. It has a masonry wall along the east property line, landscaping on the commercial side, landscaping on the residential side, and when you look at, in fact, if I may, I'd like to grab a bigger board. When we look at a, at a blow-up of what we're talking about here tonight, this, this is the commercial corner that the questions are about. Fletcher's actually here is where it's at. This was envisioned as, over in this area, as being a daycare center, and I believe that's what it's intended to be. Obviously, there's, this little blue thing is actually a city well site. Then we have a bunch of trees and so on in this area, so you have a combination of uses, setbacks, masonry wall, landscaping on both sides of the wall and so on, so it's set up in a very compatible kinds of setting along this property line. The street location itself was worked and reworked and reworked in a variety of different scenarios and for a whole lot of reasons that we can get into more detail if you'd like. This is really where it works best and where it needs to be for a variety of reasons and where it needs to come out. So, we believe that we've been very compatible in here with, with what's appropriate with the interface with this future commercial. In addition to that, as you may recall from the stipulation, Stipulation Twenty-two is one of your standard stipulations that talks about commercial disclosure. You know, sometimes we're disclosing airport or we're disclosing ag uses or disclosing this or disclosing that. Number Twenty-two talks about, among other things, disclosing to future residents the proximity of commercial in the area, so we, we believe, at least from our perspective, we covered that from a variety of different aspects. With respect to the, the question about wanting to hear from the home builder, we can't have a home builder talk with you tonight because there's not home builders under contract to buy these parcels. Evergreen Communities is the residential entitlement and development entity under the Evergreen umbrella. Evergreen Communities does not build houses. They contract with home builders that will build the houses, just like they've done on a, a similar kind of development called Higley Park, which is in Gilbert, which uses some of, some of these same types of urbanism techniques and has brought builders in to build products that are similar to some of the products that are in this booklet. This booklet provides information, which between the development standards and the design guidelines, representative examples, and all of that needing to go through staff review as well, as far as the product review, provides a great deal of assurance that what we're talking about here is something that will fit within those various boxes that have been defined and is something that not only the city, but Evergreen will be monitoring as well to make sure that we're really dealing with quality, diversity, creativity, those types of traits that we believe are very important in this kind of setting.
I have a couple of quick questions, and I want to make a comment. Could you hold up your chart again, Mr. Bull? On the north end of the commercial at the south corner, you have right, yeah, just move your finger up to the northwest. Nope, the other.
Northwest?
Along the street, right where that street is coming down the middle. Keep going to the right, right, no, the right head.
To the right?
I'm sorry. Right in the middle of that spot.
Where do you want me to go to?
Is there connectivity here? In other words, does this connect into the, does this connect through? So, is there going to be a pedestrian annex?
Yes, we've tried to create a few pedestrian...
Could you, could you come up and identify yourself, please? Thank you.
Ron Crater, one thirty-one Innovation Drive, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We've created a few pedestrian passageways to connect through the neighborhood into the retail center, mostly towards the northerly edge. We're not proposing to connect through from the easterly boundary because that's sort of the back of the, of the retail, but we thought that it would be important to connect a couple pathways through from the northerly edge of that retail site.
We're talking about the south, the corner of Van Buren and Mitchfield Road, that, that corner, but there'll be full connectivity between the residential and the districts. Is that correct, or is there...
Yes, Commissioner Gelsner, there will be a lot of connectivity between the anticipated commercial and mixed-use development in the district and the residential neighborhoods that are directly adjacent to it. One of the ideas behind the overall plan is to break down the conventional barriers of land use and try to make sure that the streets and the buildings and the greenways create a lot of pedestrian connections.
Who is responsible for the improvements to the Bullard Wash behind your project? Is that your property or is that our property?
Bullard Wash is, as you know, is being developed in a joint fashion between, or among the city and McFlood, having started at the south end and working its way north.
And, and you will have at least several pedestrian-friendly ways of getting from the residential into Bullard Wash, which is going to be a park, a linear park. Is that correct?
Bullard Wash is in, yes, Bullard Wash is intended to be a linear park, and yes, there's pedestrian connections that will be provided in, here conceptually, in this type of location. Coming down this simple spine would be a very natural location to buy that.
Probably up in the northeast corner.
That would be a, a good possibility as well. I think the actual identification and finalization of those is something that would best be decided in conjunction with the preliminary plats that go through on this, but we intend to provide pedestrian, not vehicular, obviously, but pedestrian connections to Bullard Wash.
I guess let me give you my final, my, my final comments. I read through this, this presentation was just, it knocked my socks off, and in a very, very good way. This is, this is a kind of project that I think Goodyear needs, and I was, I just, I, I thought, you know, the, the fact that it's a neighborhood, the fact that the streets are straight, the fact that it looks like, it almost looks like a little bit of England transposed into Goodyear, but I mean, it's, it is very different than everything that we have seen before this planning commission in a long time, and it's very innovative. Here's my big concern, and, and I'll just tell you this for going up in front of City Council. The pictures look great. My concern is, will you build what you're showing us? And I have, I will just say that, and I think you need to show pictures of what you're doing, currently doing in Gilbert, and the type of home builders that you're going to have, otherwise, I think you're going to have some issues, and I'll leave it at that.
We hear you, and appreciate the compliments, and we'll follow up accordingly.
Other questions for Mr. Bull for the development team?
I have one.
Ms. Osborn.
My usual little stipulation in there, covered tot lots aren't in there, so I'm assuming that you guys will have covered tot lots.
It's, it's always dangerous to correct a commissioner.
Is it in here because I told you?
I know it's in here.
Okay.
I will find it. You know, when you have four hundred stipulations, it's easy to misline. Twenty-seven, I think, I think twenty-seven will...
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Shade canopy, okay.
We'd be happy to agree to number twenty-seven.
And I will echo Mr. Gelsner's thoughts because seeing these wonderful drawings really puts you there. It helps you visualize what you're, you're about to approve, and, you know, I, I have a hard time driving down the one oh one and seeing all those two-story homes that are right up against the freeway that are very drab, and I would really like to pretend that this is going to be something spectacular that will be seen from the freeway, and by these drawings, that's what it's going to be, so I guess we're going to hold you to that. Thank you.
Just want to go on record. I kind of want to follow up with Commissioner Gelsner. I realize that there's a proposed Bullard Wash alignment. I think that it's important that we make sure that we have a connection from there that will take you under the freeway and over to Center Point and eventually Estrella Falls. So, I don't know if there's any participation on behalf of the builder and the city and the Flood Control District, but just want to make sure that it was on record that I'd like to see that occur. Meanwhile, I think it's a great project. I like it too, and I'd see it move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Lord, come in.
Yeah, I would just like to echo those thoughts. I, I was looking at the houses, and I know you don't have your builders set up or anything at this point, but it does remind me of some of the historic areas in the, the Phoenix area, the downtown area, the downtown Glendale area. I would really like to see that, especially since this is going to be the gateway to the city center area, that I think it might make a very distinctive mark, so thank you very much.
Our pleasure. Other questions or comments for Mr. Bull?
I, too, was blown away when I saw the elevations. I really like the idea of building smaller neighborhoods that have different architecture. I, I think from the elevations, these are the kinds of homes that people are going to be drawn to Goodyear because they're here and not being built in other places. The challenge, as Mr. Gelsner said, and I think you'll find it again when you hit the City Council, the challenge will be, we hope it looks like what you've presented here. We've had a couple of instances in the not-too-distant past where what was proposed was very different than the pictures that were presented at the time of zoning, and when, when it came to the site plan, fortunately, we had a use permit to deal with and we were able to illuminate the issue to a point where the, the developer decided that it was in his best interest to, to conform. I, we have not had an adversarial relationship. I anticipate that the goodwill, the goodwill will continue and that you will build what you've proposed, and I'm excited about this project. I think this is really, really starting to break the mold and the kind of thing that I think many of us have been looking for. The red tile roofs and the Santa Barbara architecture, I think we beat that to death, and it's time for something that looks a little different. The bungalows, the town homes are welcome, and the way you've done the, the court homes and the multifamily, I think is really creative, and I'm looking forward to seeing that product on the ground. And with that, I'll end my comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, I just dropped some language for the, for thirty-fifth stipulation addressing Commissioner Bay's concern, and it reads as follows, "The public sales report and final plats shall include a statement disclosing that the streets within Estrella Commons shall be maintained by the Homeowners Association."
All right. And I'd be happy, we accept that additional stipulation.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to weigh for both of them.
Just a thought, Farhad, shouldn't that be also the developer until it's turned over to the Homeowners Association? Quibble, but...
Well, the developer is the Homeowners Association until they turn, turn it over. Thank God.
I will include that in there somehow.
We trust that, you know, spirit, whatever the language ends up being.
Okay.
I think we're, we're comfortable with that. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Last opportunity before I close the public hearing. Any further comments or questions? Close the public hearing and ask for commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case zero six two zero zero dash zero 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 three. The request to rezone approximately one hundred and eighty acres from AU to preliminary planned area development for thirty acres of commercial and a final PAD area development for one hundred and fifty acres of residential with thirty-five stipulations, and seventeen, nineteen, twenty-one, and thirty-four have been revised by mutual agreement with staff and the developer.
I have a motion.
Second?
Do we have a second for Mr. DeBroerke? Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bull.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next case is zero six dash three five zero dash zero 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 five. Wireless communication facilities, special use permit, a public hearing to consider a request for a special use permit for a wireless communication facility on zero point zero one acres, generally located one hundred and thirty feet south of McDowell Road and approximately six hundred feet west of Cervel Avenue in the Pebble Creek Golf Resort Planned Area Development. The applicant is Paula Day of Plancom Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Staff is recommending that that particular item be deferred to the October fourth meeting to rectify a error in the, the public notice, which indicated a wrong address, so we have re-advertized that to indicate the correct address. So, we have readadvertized that to indicate the correct address, and that's deferring it to the October.
Okay, do you, do we need formal commission action to, to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Then in that case...
Before we vote, could you grab the map and show us where this tower is gonna be located?
Uh, I regret unless anybody here has a map of Pebble Creek. Um, it's, if you recall, the maintenance facility, there was actually a T-Mobile facility.
It's up, it's south of Indian School and Saraval.
Yeah, instead of McDowell Road, that's the error.
Okay, so, so it's in that maintenance facility area near the former Monopum, or the current Monopum?
Correct, it's within 75, 80 feet of that Monopum.
Great, we'll have another one.
In that case, I'll entertain a motion to continue.
We'll continue this item, sir, on the, on the wireless communication facilities special use permit.
Okay, I have a motion, second, second for, again for Mr. DeBrocker. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries to continue that case to October 4th. Case zero-five-dash-six-three-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-one-zero, Palm Place Plaza. Say that fast. Comprehensive sign package, a request for the approval of the comprehensive sign package for Palm Place Plaza, a professional office development of 4.4 acres, generally located the southeast corner of McDowell Road and 145th Avenue within general commercial C2 District. The applicant is Randy Garcia of Young Electric Sign Company.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Subject four-and-a-half acre property is located at the southeast corner of McDowell Road and 145th Avenue, and is known as Palm Place Plaza, a professional office development that will consist of seven single-story condominium buildings ranging in size from just over 5,000 square feet to approximately 8,100 square feet. The applicant this evening is requesting approval of a comprehensive sign package that addresses building-mounted signage, window signage, private-delivering entrance door signage, as well as two freestanding monument signs. By looking at this exhibit, you'll be able to see the locations of the two proposed freestanding tenant monument signs. One will be located adjacent to 145th Avenue at the access point, and the other one will be located at McDowell Road, at the McDowell Road access point. This is an exhibit of the proposed multi-tenant signage. Signage will include the same type of slate embellishment that is proposed for, uh, the office buildings, and each monument sign will identify the Palm Place Plaza name and contain eight, eight tenants' panels. Staff is recommending approval of the sign package with the noted stipulations, as it is in compliance with the provisions of the zoning ordinance. This concludes my presentation. The applicant, Randy Garcia, is here tonight. Staff, the applicant available for any questions may have.
Questions of staff?
The commission one time had some discussion on a similar package, and I think in that discussion, we began talking about, uh, hand-painted signs and windows and things like that for, and we wanted to try to, uh, restrict or limit that. Uh, I didn't know if the commission still felt that way about this, and thought I'd raised the, raised the concern.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, that's already, um, there's already specific standards in our zoning ordinance.
Is there?
I think there's, um, percentage. I'm trying to remember, I think it was...
Yeah, I know, it was a while ago.
I can't remember everything, maybe, uh, we have the ordinance here, but I, it's covered under the...
If it's covered, I'm fine, you're good.
That's one of the staff... We do cover signage, but one of the things that Brett has reminded me of, I don't, if you, if you recall, in the Palm Valley cornerstone development at the corner of...
Oh, yeah.
Dicert and, and McDowell Road, high health, um, they, um, plastered their windows with purple, uh, purple something, I don't know what, um, for security reasons, I think, and that's not really covered in our ordinance. We didn't have anything to cover something like that, so, if we want to preclude something like that from happening, then we'd have to add a separate stipulation.
It's, it's, it's up to you, I mean, you wanna manage that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'd like to point out that this sign package specifically prohibits translucent materials to be placed in windows, and that would cover the type of signage that, Harvey, you speak here?
Free repainting, that's all the stuff.
It does prohibit...
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe the sign ordinance has been updated since that discussion. We're all sufficiently foggy about, about the details, but I think the intent is, is clear. Any other questions of staff?
I think one of the only things that I ever see as an issue, for me as being a retailer myself, is that the, the back doors, I keep seeing in a lot of these sign packages, that the, uh, letterings or numbers of back doors can only be an inch tall, and that's just not appropriate. And so, looking at Exhibit D, it's hard to tell if that's the case here or not, because it says scale three-eighths of an inch to one inch rear entrance elevation.
Saying that, it's a foot.
Is that a foot? I'm sorry, not an inch? Okay, then I'm fine. That's only ever my issue. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Questions for the applicant? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the sign package, sign plan? If not?
Mr. Chairman...
Entertain commission action?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the, of case zero-five-dash-six-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-zero, the Palm Place Plaza comprehensive sign package.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Osborne. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Case zero-six-dash-five-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-one, Palm Valley Commerce Park Phase Two Preliminary Plat Amendment, request to, for approval to amend the preliminary plat for Palm Valley Commerce Park Phase Two, subdividing approximately 68 acres into 11 lots and one tract, generally located at the northeast-west corner of McDowell and Litchfield Roads, within Phase Two of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development. The application, the applicant is Jay Ellingson of Suncor Development.
Thank you, Chairman Horseman, members of the commission, members of the public. Palm Valley Phase Two Commerce Park is a mixed-use commercial development, generally located at the northwest corner of Litchfield and McDowell Roads. The aerial photo exhibit that I've placed up here shows the subdivision boundary with a dotted yellow line, and you can see the land uses surrounding the subject property include, to the north, portions of the Hale Irwin Golf Course, to the south, the Palm Valley Pavilion West Commercial Center, also to the south, the McLean Southwest Building. To the west is the Palm Valley Phase Two Parcel 1516, which is the Camelot Home subdivision that is currently being constructed, and to the east is the Palm Valley Luxury Gardens, and, um, the, the, this preliminary plat application is being submitted as an amendment to the, um, previous subdivision plat. The original preliminary and final plats were, were approved in 2001 and 2002, and, and just in an effort to provide a little bit of, of background, um, as the commission may recall, development of this commercial center commenced with the construction of the, of the golf course. It was followed by the first phase of the Palm Valley Office Park Development, which is the office building at, at the corner of Litchfield and McDowell. Subsequent development occurred with the construction of the Hampton Inn, and now we have the Residence Inn Hotel. We have the Washington Federal Savings Bank, Macaroni Grill, and McGrass Fish House Restaurants, and also the Lipsco Water Reclamation Facility. And also, we have the La Piazza at Palm Valley Commercial Center that's also been constructed, just, just to the east of the Lipsco area. This exhibit, uh, shows the, the boundaries of the plat and the properties that are involved. You can see the, the building footprints of the existing buildings on this exhibit. Since the original plat recording, various boundary revisions have occurred, and I wanna run through those real quick. Number one, the conversion of golf course tracks to residential and vice versa, for the purpose of reducing golf balls encroaching into residential areas, and also for reduction of golf course maintenance. Another change was the conversion of the golf course tracks to commercial use. There was the elimination of the pitch and putt executive golf course for economic reasons. The revision of the driving range and its irrigation lake is part of the plat, and it's separated by a new subdivision. There was a revision in the shape of Lipsco's parcel to accommodate its ultimate building configuration, odor easement requirements, and access and parking easements. And finally, internal to the original plat, there were various lot lines that have been slightly modified to accommodate purchase requirements of, of future users, uh, essentially to provide proper li, proper lotting for future buyers in this area. Staff is recommending approval, subject to the 15 stipulations outlined in the staff report. This concludes the presentation, my staff. Staff is available to answer any questions. Mr. Jay Ellingson with Suncor is also available, for any questions that you might have.
Questions for staff? I have one, uh, one question that, that Jay may wanna answer. The circulation into the two, the three new lots on the east side of the driving range, there's a, a roadway that goes between, was it Macaroni Grill and the bank? Is that correct?
That's the hotel.
Oh, the hotel. Um, the, how will the access be handled to the parcel that's further to the, to the south? Will there be access built on those three new lots to, uh, provide inter parcel access?
Chairman, members of the commission, Jay Ellingson, 14130 West McDowell Road. It's good to be here again. Uh, the, the road actually does exist already. If, if you can, can't see it very well, this connection's already made, uh, from the Palm Valley Office Park up to this road already. Is that what you were asking?
It is indeed.
Okay.
And I...
The, this road will be extended here as well, providing access to this lot and this lot. Uh, there is a, there is currently a buyer for this that has, at least shown some preliminary renderings for an office building, uh, on this lot. I will say that, that this, um, process has been, um, a long one, because every time we have submitted it, there came another change. And so, the process, much to our fault, has been delayed, because if it was odor easements or if it was changed for the pitch and putt, or it was changed for something else, it's, we should've been able to do this, um, some years ago. And so, it just kinda fell through, and we realized that we needed to amend this plat to show what the real circumstances of this, of these properties really is, in terms of their relationship one to another.
Thank you. Other questions of either Mr. Ellingson or staff?
I have no question, but I have to give kudos to you, Suncor, because over the years, I have truly seen where your company has had the insight of where some thing's not working, change it, and make it better. You know, the outlets, shopping, and now, uh, the pitch and putt, you know, as little as that may have been, but just seeing the, the insight of that, it's, it's not working, let's make it better, and, and they've always come ahead, so I thought that was, wanted to give you that.
Thank you. I wish our crystal ball was such that we didn't have, but we do it, but you're right, we will, and we do.
Now, just don't get rid of that one little lake that keeps those big white birds coming back, because I really enjoy watching them. Hopefully, they won't go away.
All right.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff or Ms. Ellingson?
I, I have an off-topic question of Mr. Ellingson. Um, McDowell Road construction between Bullard and Litchfield Road, can you give us any kind of estimate of completion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, yes, and, and I would like to report that we're doing this work for the city of Goodyear.
We understand that.
No, this is truly, that, we don't have a dog in most of this roadwork. We're doing this as a favor to the city. But to answer your question specifically, um, they should be milling tomorrow in terms of the, uh, laning that's been added to the center lanes, and we should be paving, uh, next week. Uh, that's, the whole road gets an overlay of, uh, rubberized asphalt. We're trying to hit the, or work within the deadline of, the end of next week, because there's a price increase for all of that, so...
Cool.
So, it's coming to a conclusion. It's been difficult, there's been a lot of players, and there's been a lot of considerations. Um, I hope in the future that we can talk everybody into doing the center lanes with the project, 'cause it's just more efficient and better use of money, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. We always wanna stay informed. We appreciate...
Whatever I can do.
Any further questions or comments? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this case? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I just have to say for the record that the first four stipulations, most of this is existing, so, it's there, and we're not looking that we're going to be held to another standard and replace anything. And so, just for the record, I have to say that, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience would like to speak? Hearing none? Close public hearing, and ask for commission action.
Chair, I recommend that we, uh, approve case zero-six-five-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-one, Palm Valley Commerce Park Phase Two Preliminary Plat Amendment with the 15 stipulations.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second. I have a second for Mr. Lux. Any just further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Ellingson. Next case is case zero-six-dash-six-three-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-three, Palm Valley Medical Campus Comprehensive Sign Package, a request for the approval of a comprehensive sign package for Palm Valley Medical Campus to allow for directional monument and wall signage located at 13677 West McDowell Road within the Palm Valley Planned Area Development. The applicant is Alan Swaim of Brazo Health. Mr. Buring.
Thank you. Chairman Horseman...
Chairman Horseman, members of the commission, members of the public. I put up an aerial photo showing the Palm Valley Medical Campus. You can see the boundaries again are, there's a yellow line around the boundaries of the campus. The hospital is right here. You have the Target Building here, Palm Valley Pavilions, Commercial Center to the west. To the south are the large retention bases. They're actually under the jurisdiction of Maricopa County Flood Control District. To the east, the Palm Valley Cornerstone Commercial Center where the Lowe's building is, and to the north, Single Family Residential. I'm going to put up a different exhibit here, so you can see the different buildings that are included. Okay, so this is, exhibit shows McDowell Road to the north. The Target Building would be this area, so the hospital is here. Here's the existing Palm Valley Rehabilitation Center. And then, this area here is the 18 acres that the hospital has recently purchased from Suncor. As was mentioned, this case is a comprehensive sign package to allow for directional monument, wall signage, and building addressing signage for the Palm Valley Medical Center. And to provide some brief background, as the commission is aware, the Palm Valley Medical Center is, it's expanded dramatically since its original master plan approval in 1997. As I mentioned, most recently Vanguard acquired 18 acres from Suncor in 2004 to expand their medical campus. And the hospital building also has recently expanded. It's added two additional floors to five stories, and there is a ground floor addition that is currently in the works to expand the clinical space of the first floor of the hospital. The exhibit that you have before you right now shows the freestanding signs that are included in the sign package. The, one of the things that we had to take into consideration when we were reviewing the sign package, the zoning ordinance did not contemplate signage for a hospital center or a medical campus type environment. So, we had to take that into consideration when we were reviewing the number of signs that they're requesting, and also the size of the signage in this in your packet. There are five requests that, in most instances, slightly exceed the zoning ordinance standards, and those are all outlined in your staff report. However, given the importance of the hospital and the Palm Valley Medical Center in the community, and the reasonable request that they're, of the applicant, staff recommends approval of the sign package subject to the four stipulations outlined in your staff report. I want to focus in on one of the signs to give you an example of one of the requests. The applicant is requesting a hospital monument sign with a proposed height of 12 feet, 10 inches, and the zoning ordinance standard is eight feet. In addition, the area of the sign, of some of the signs are slightly larger than what the zoning ordinance would allow. For example, the zoning ordinance sets a limit of 48 square feet of sign area. So, this sign does slightly exceed the zoning ordinance standards. The applicant has provided detailed rationale for each of the requests. They're in deviation from the zoning ordinance. Staff has evaluated the requests and recommends approval. We have representatives from both the hospital and representatives of the sign company who put the sign package together. This concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions, and there are several individuals on behalf of the applicant who are available for questions as well.
Just a quick comment. This is exactly what we were looking for when the previous proposal was submitted, and I'm really pleased to see a comprehensive package brought forward. Yes, the, there is situations where it exceeds the ordinance, but I think the public health and safety are more than adequate reasons for conforming, providing the community with appropriate direction to particularly emergency and hospital facilities. I think that the staff has hit it on the head and turned, hit the nail on the head in that regard. There other questions of staff?
Just one.
Mr. Bay?
Chairman Horseman, I noticed that they included in their package that there's a future signal at the hospital entrance. Is that being put in by the city, or is the hospital putting that signal in?
Hang on, just a second. Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Bay, in conjunction with the zoning and the expansion of the hospital, the developer of the hospital is required to install a traffic signal at the intersection of McDowell Road and 136th Drive. And the stipulation on the zoning was that the traffic signal needed to be constructed and operational prior to the certificate of occupancy for the ground floor expansion.
I have a question for you, or maybe for the applicant. The connection between Cornerstone Boulevard and the medical campus, basically the bridge over the wash that's there, when do we anticipate that being built?
I'll defer that question to the applicant.
We didn't scare you guys, sir.
Mark Barkenbush, 8620 North 22nd Avenue, representing Vanguard Health Systems. Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Gelsner, the current project that we have in construction now includes a connection between that parking lot and Cornerstone Avenue, and we anticipate that that will be constructed and complete prior to the occupancy or certificate of occupancy for the first floor expansion as well.
Now that you're up here, I have a couple other questions. When do you anticipate parking structures being built? Can you give me any kind of timeframe on that?
The, we don't have a specific timeframe yet. Part of it is contingent upon how rapidly the other medical office building development occurs. We currently have some discussions with the developer who is interested in beginning the next office building, which on your-
That would be building one?
Building number two is anticipated as being the next.
Is the developer the IMS people?
That's who has a quest interest in that project.
Okay. Last question, then I have a comment. How are you going to handle the current signage, especially the Palm Valley Medical Plaza Building, the existing building that's there, the original building? That sign looks kind of dated and old. Are we going to retrofit the building, or does midnight, you know, destruction corps have to go out and wipe it out for you, so you have to replace it?
We've had discussions with all of the members of the association, and their recommendation is that when they would have to make upgrades to their sign, either for maintenance purposes or changing out a significant portion of the tenants in the building, that at that point, they would then bring the sign into conformance with the comprehensive sign package. They have objected to, if this is passed, then having to, you know, do that in one fell swoop. And so, that's been their request.
I can, you know, rest assured, the city council will encourage them to do it sooner rather than later, just for the look of the campus. My comment to you is, I'm going to give you, you know, the good news and the bad news. The good news is, this is a great sign package. The bad news is, it took way too long for you to bring it forward. This should have been, when we sent, when we sent the hospital packing almost a year and a half ago, and told them to come up with a comprehensive sign package, and here we are, a year and a half later, and you're finally getting it to us, I just think it's, you waited too long. And like I said, you know, in some ways, you know, the fact that you've delayed it and you've put together an excellent package is very, very good. However, I sure wish we would have seen it six, eight, nine months ago, because, you know, this campus is really moving right along.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
So, not the applicant's, uh, I'm glad to see the sign package. I know that we're being asked to do over the limit, over the top, but there's a couple of things in the package that I'm not comfortable with, so I just want to point them out. First of all, it does not take into consideration all of the traffic that's actually going to be coming from what's currently called Santa Fe, Rancho Santa Fe Boulevard, and turns into, I guess it's called Crossroads Cornerstone Boulevard. That's a, that's a long, open thoroughfare that leads directly to your campus, and I don't see anywhere here where you're providing directional for these people who are, have an emergency to get in, that will allow them to come directly down that road and then find their way into the facility and over to the hospital. And so, more specifically, what I did, I marked, I marked mine up, if that would help, to show that, that from my perspective, for traffic circulation, coming down that long road, then what they run into here is this, this corner of your campus, and my assumption is that this, these roads continue through, and there's no signage here that allows them to move forward.
At this point in time, that those roadways don't exist.
Agreed. Neither do any of these buildings or parking lots, so.
Okay. Our initial thinking, just to respond to that, our initial thinking was that we know that that roadway would be a reliever, but from a wayfinding experience, as far as addressing and getting visitors to the campus for the, for the first time, the majority of the access into the campus would be off of McDowell Road, and that was our thought process in bringing people into the campus from McDowell.
I want to echo Commissioner Bay's concern. You know, I drive Cornerstone Boulevard a lot to get over to Mimi's and slip right behind, and you come right out of Walmart and go right across the street, and it's a straight shot down there. And I sure wish you would add a, think about adding another directional sign that faces, you know, face for people coming from the west, because people are going to slip in through those back streets when they, because they know about them. And I think that, I think the commission and city council would support it, and we just think, we would rather err on the, I know a sign costs money, but I think this is something that would be beneficial to the circulation.
Especially since you, most of your verbiage in here talks about public safety, life helping, and finding their way through the campus, that you have a, you have a back way, or which seems more of a thoroughfare. For example, if there were an event on the freeway or the underpass, inhabitants would take that Cornerstone Boulevard, they wouldn't go all the way up to McDowell, and then come all the way over and then come all the way back down, so I would, I would highly recommend that you include additional signs to service those people who come from that direction.
Okay. My team has recommended, just pointing out a couple clarifications, just so I understand the expectation. Signs labeled C, C dot four, two dot three, and then also further interior, I believe, sign three dot four, as well as potentially C two dot two, may address some of that directional wayfinding.
You may want to consider L-shaped signs that are, you know-
Both directions.
That work in both directions.
Well, I guess, just a general comment, I appreciate the feedback and understand-
Okay.
-the concern, and as far as representing our proposal, we would not be opposed to modifying this to suit those needs, because again, it is the intent is to make the experience as easy to navigate the campus as possible.
That's good enough for me. Do we need to indicate, have some sort of indication of sign placement for your site plan? If we were to approve this before going to council, do we need to see us?
Do you think you can work it out with the applicant before it goes to council without us making a motion to try to add stipulations to certain-
Specific locations.
Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Gelsner, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good enough for me. Oh, there was, I have one other comment. All of these signs look really, really nice, except for C three and C four. And, and I, I hate to say this, but I hate to be the one to say this, because it should come from someone else, I'm sure, but you've put a lot of effort into these other signs, and these signs are, in some cases, at least similar width, maybe not similar height. I would like for you to keep that theme of having the CMU block as a base foundation for all of your signs. Since we've been so benevolent in allowing you to have these larger signs, the minimum that you could do is make, eliminate the C three and C fours, and use nothing less than a C two sign on your campus.
Chairman Horseman, Commissioner Bay, for the record, staff did recommend that these two signs contain a block base similar to the other design, and I will defer to the applicant to provide the rationale for why they, why they did not want to move in that direction.
Okay.
Jamie Cowgill, JRC Design at 4634 North 44th Street, Phoenix, Arizona. The, the development of the sign system is based on a hierarchy of information and need, basically. It also, these signs already match the existing signs that have been approved on the site, and there are quite a few of them throughout the site, that are, that are currently in effect directing people to individual locations to pull into parking, park over here, residents, yeah, visitors over here, doctors over here. So, it was also a condition of expense. When you add a brick base, you might as well add another $1,000 for each base that you put on. A hospital works on a very low profit margin, as you know. I know we all think that they make a lot of money, but they don't. And so, we have budget issues. We also have the hierarchy of elements that, again, the, the more important the sign, the more massive, and the larger, the taller they are. Therefore, that's why they were reduced to a much smaller size. They're not as, there's not as much information needed, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, all these others? I'll trade, I'll trade you the C threes and C fours for the good signs that come, a couple of signs that come from the west that give us some direction from the areas that we thought we had concerns were. I mean, I'll defer to-
But you'd like the larger ones on the, on the east edge?
Yeah. I want to be able, I want people who sneak behind Penny's-
Yeah.
-to be able to find the hospital and find the right building that they need to go to.
We dealt with that issue with Suncor, and you know, theoretically, you don't want to take people in stress when they're driving, in a stress-related issue, if someone is injured through a retail environment, because they're driving fast, they're going to run over people, you're not expecting pedestrians.
But trust me-
No, I understand.
Going behind Lowe's and going behind the sports place and going behind Penny's is a real easy shot.
Already a fast-
And you do it.
You've already got through there?
Already a fast. All the time, that's the fast way.
Again, it's going over private property, and it's not out- Again, it's going over private property, and it's not ours, we can address it, for sure, for congressional information.
The side of your campus is where you need to, you know...
No, that's what I'm saying, we can, we will address those, those eastern edges on that.
Okay, well, I guess I'll go with Commissioner Gelsor, I'll let you keep your stick signs.
Stick signs. Thank you.
But, I guess, you know, here in, in your plan, though, it says you're replacing most of these signs, and are, are these, are these actually new signs that you're putting in, these C fours, are these new, or are these replacements?
Some are going to be replacements, there may be just face changes on existing signs. We tried to work with many of the elements that they had, so that we could save money for the hospital.
Okay, yeah, but, because I know it's costing them more money for the larger signs, so... All right, I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission on the sign package? Last call for questions or comments. Okay. Not, I will entertain commission action.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of case zero-six dash six-three-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero-three, the Palm Valley Medical Campus Comprehensive Sign Package.
I have a motion recommending approval, do I have a second?
I'd like to amend his, his motion to assure that they work with staff to include additional signs, and if he would agree to that, then I will second the motion.
Is that agreeable?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
We have the amended motion, and the second by Mr. Bay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Could we take five minutes before this last piece of business?
Sure. Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're back on the record. Our next case is case zero-five dash two-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero-one-seven, Wood Corporate Center rezone, public hearing to consider, consider a request to rezone approximately two-hundred-and-forty-four acres, generally located along the east side of Estrella Parkway between Goodyear Boulevard on the north, Elwood Road on the south, from the agricultural AG district to final planned area development, PAD district for mixed-use development containing commercial, industrial, business, office park, and residential land uses. The applicant is John Rogiri of Rose Properties Southwest. Open the public hearing. Mr. Bay?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here with the commission, thank you. As you said, this is an application for PAD zoning on approximately two-hundred-and-forty-four acres along Estrella Parkway. It comprises two parcels. The northern parcel is approximately fifty-seven acres, it's located north of Goodyear Boulevard, excuse me, Lower Bocai Road, and extends a little bit north of Goodyear Boulevard. The southern parcel is a hundred-and-eighty-seven acres, and extends on the south from Elwood Road to about four-hundred feet short of Lower Bocai Road. The surrounding property is, to the north, is undeveloped agricultural lands owned by Sun NP. They have an application pending with city staff for similar planned area development zoning for mixed-use development. To the south is the, the Insumet aluminum recycling facility, to the east is Bullard Wash and Goodyear, Phoenix Goodyear Airport. On the west side of Estrella Parkway dislocation, on the southern portion, is agricultural lands, that was a subject of a rezoning that you heard your last hearing, for mixed-use development, some industrial, some residential further to the west. And along the west side of Estrella Parkway is Estrella Vista Residential Community. The city's general plan designates the southern a hundred-and-eighty-seven acres for light industrial and general industrial uses. The northern fifty-seven acres is, the, the majority portion of it, from Lower Bocai Road to Goodyear Boulevard South, in this area, is designated as community commercial, and the part north of Goodyear Boulevard South is within the city center designation. The, the city center specific plan, area plan, which this commission recommended for approval in August, and goes for the city council next week, designates the southeast quadrant of the city center area as business park land uses. To orient you relative to the city center specific area plan, the portion of this property is within the southern area of the city center plan. It's not within the Main Street, Main Ring Road, but is in the lower portion, and is, again, designated in the city center plan as business park land uses. Here, this is an application for planned area development for a mixed use. The applicant has submitted a detailed development plan called Wood Corporate Campus, a booklet provided to you. It contains the development master plan, conceptual illustrated plans for each sub-development area, a matrix of permitted land uses for each of those areas, circulation plan, and development standards for each of the development areas. In addition to providing the planned area development booklet, there's also included and is supplemental to the PAD rezoning, is a set of development design guidelines that contain architectural guidelines, building development standards, landscape guidelines, that all guide the future development of the property. Regards to the detailed development plan for this mixed-use development, in the northern acre, fifty-seven acres, from Lower Bocai Road to, to Goodyear Boulevard, and just north of Goodyear Boulevard, this is planned for a mixed-use development. Mixed use, as defined and structured within the PAD, is for commercial, retail, restaurants, entertainment, offices, and enhanced employment opportunities. It also contains a limited number of multifamily residential units, a hundred-and-twelve, as being above-ground floor retail. These land uses are consistent with the city center concepts for that quadrant, southeast quadrant, which also encourages employment uses, and assume a design concepts regards to an urban character. The southern, larger portion of their development plan is proposed for three different types of land uses. Business office park, which is what's shown in the varied shades of purple, and I'll describe a little bit of those in a few minutes. The lower south end is a community commercial parcel, that's in kind of a pink color, and then there's a small, light industrial area on the southeast side of Lower Bocai, or Bullard Avenue, that's separated from the rest of the development. The business park area is so divided, or divided into three subcategories. They are flex, industrial, low office, these are one, two-story buildings, mid-office, which are three-to-six-story office buildings, and what they call high office, which is seven or, or to nine stories. Within the development plan, the very light purple is what is the flow lex, flow, flex, low office. The, around this area is the mid-office, and the high office is within this core. The land uses within this business park area are planned for light manufacturing, electronic product and component manufacturing, computer and high-technology uses, general office buildings, research and development, aerospace, aeronautics, those type of land uses you would see within a, within a business campus environment, business park campus environment. The commercial area in the, in the lower south area contains twenty-three acres, this is planned for a typical neighborhood shopping center, the uses would be, you know, grocery stores, restaurants, and drugstores. The small industrial area is really only about three and a half acres in our southeast corner. Again, this is isolated from other part of the development, with Bullard Avenue. It's planned for very limited light industrial uses, and uses that are compatible with airport operations. The light industrial area is within the approach path for Phoenix Goodyear Airport. The buildings within that development area are limited to, to one story, twenty feet. The development plan, PAD development plan, contains specific development standards for each development area. It's hard to see, but the table four point one within, within the PAD, contains a table that defines the building height, setbacks, maximum lot coverage, and all the development standards for each of the sub-areas, the mixed-use area, mixed, as well as the business park, and the three categories of business park, the commercial, and the light industrial. The building heights proposed within this PAD are higher than that which are typically found within the commercial industrial districts. Also, the, the building setbacks are closer to the street than you would normally find. These are consistent with their concept of what's being proposed is for an urban character in a, in a corporate business campus, bringing the buildings closer to the street and creating more pedestrian orientation. Similar concepts is what's in the city center plan. In staff's analysis, the, the request of PAD zoning is consistent with a light industrial, general industrial, community commercial land uses designated in the general plan. The development of property has planned mixed use. Business park project is compatible with the joint properties in the immediate area, which are also planned or zoned today for a similar business park or commercial development. The proposal will be compatible with the residential land uses on the west, west side of Estrella Parkway dislocation. The PAD specifies that the maximum building height of all buildings along Estrella be no higher than thirty feet, as a transition from the higher intense buildings within this project to the single-family residential to the, to the west. The zoning and proposed mixed-use development of the northern parcel, as I said earlier, is consistent with the city center specific area plan, which designates the southeast quadrant as a business park land, park land uses. Staff has two items of, of somewhat concern regards to the PAD that we've included in the staff report. The first one is the proposal for the maximum building heights. The PAD specifies that the maximum building height within the business park area is sixty-three feet, five stories, which staff is comfortable with. In the mid-office and high-office areas, greater building heights may be achieved to a maximum of eighty-three feet in the mid-office, and a hundred-and-twenty-two feet in the high office, by the approval of the use permit. Well, staff is comfortable with those heights of buildings, in order to create the character and urban character, and the type of developments proposed here, those heights may or may not be appropriate immediately. Those heights may or may not be appropriate immediately. They may be more appropriate in the long, in the future, and under certain conditions. So therefore, we recommend that they be done by use permit, anything heights over sixty-three feet. Staff wants to ensure that the applicant understands that this is not an entitlement to this use permit and therefore has recommended a stipulation that provides some standards within the PAD, knowing what conditions we would feel a use permit would be appropriate. So we've included language in stipulation number two that talks about the appropriateness of the use permit relative to our primary concern. One, the appropriate development of the city center area and the heights and building heights that are proposed there. Also, there's a technical concern about the current city's capability of fire response to the taller buildings, water pressure, some other technical issues that haven't been really solved today. So we're proposing within stipulation number two, basically providing some guidance that in future use permit requests for any building heights over sixty-three feet, that these are the items that we want the city staff's planning commission, the city council to consider. The second item is, within recent months, as you know, in response to city initiatives to encourage the establishment of a spring training baseball facility, that this site has been identified as being potential for that type of facility. And that's growing and changing every day, getting closer every day. The current Wood Campus PAD, however, doesn't specifically list spring training baseball facility as a permitted use within the business park area. So we have recommended that the PAD be revised prior to going to city council to specifically list that use as a permitted use within the business park zone. Also, we recommended that, as part of that stipulation, that requirements be placed within the development plan, that any potential baseball facility be reviewed and approved by the city planning commission and city council. But more importantly, that should that occur, that facility occur on this property, that the applicant be required to submit an amended PAD for those portions of the property that are not a part of the baseball facility. That baseball facility would not likely encompass all of the PAD, and obviously, that use would drastically change what occurs on the remaining portion of the property. So we're basically saying an amended PAD would be warranted at that time to show how the property would be developed. That concludes my presentation regards to the application against staff's recommending approval, subject to the twenty-two stipulations in the report. Before I conclude, I want to address a couple of items. Staff has received and reported to the commission some comments from Sun NP, the adjacent property owner, regards to the PAD proposal. They are not objecting to the proposal, they're not in opposition, they generally support that, although they have raised a couple of points that I wanted to respond to, just for the commission's purposes. In Todd Tupper's from Sun NP's comments, he indicates a question about whether or not parking structures would be governed by the same height limitations as other buildings, and the answer to that is yes. So parking structures are restricted in the same manner as any other buildings in the dimension requirements. He raises a question about, throughout here, some questions about flexibility within this PAD. There may not be too much flexibility as compared to what has been transpired in other PADs. Our response is, is the PAD contains specific development standards for each of the sub-areas. It contains land, permitted land use matrix defining what uses are allowed in each of the sub-areas. So from staff's standpoint, we believe that the, while there is flexibility within the mixed-use development, there are development standards that guide the development in each of the sub-areas that are had for staff, for staff purposes, to achieve what the PAD says He raises the question, and one regards that concern about the total square footage that's identified within the PAD of four-point-four million, which is a lot of square footage of office space and development, that that would be increased based upon if they got building heights higher than the sixty-three feet. Want to make it clear that the four-point-four million that's identified in the development plan is that which was if you did the highest buildings. So it would not exceed that amount of square footage. So that's already taken into consideration then. And I guess finally, I think finally, one item to, one to cover, he makes a reference and concern regards to the city center area and its specific area plan. While it embraces the development of mixed use throughout the city center area, and questions whether or not this development really is mixed use in that concept. The city center plan is mixed use because in each of the quadrants you have different land use provided, you know, whether or not it's offices, residential, civic, or business park. In the same manner, in this PAD, there are sub-areas that define general commercial, business park, and mixed use. From that standpoint, this is a mixed-use development. And then it finally raises a question, a concern about the inclusion of baseball and what happens with the rest of the property that's not developed by baseball, and would the applicant then ask for all the intensity that's in his plan to be moved into the whatever areas left? And again, I've responded that one of our stipulations that we've recommended is that if that occurs, and baseball does occur on this property, that the applicant be required to do an amended PAD for that remaining portion of property. And I think the applicant's representative will address the baseball issue, which I'm not involved in directly at all. So with that, I'll conclude my comments. I'll be glad to answer any questions. And again, the applicant's representative is here and sure can answer your questions also.
Questions of staff?
Mr. Geltzer? Bob, doesn't stipulation twenty-one and twenty-two cover the concerns that you raised concerning the appropriate business height, the water pressure, the baseball, all of that? You know, when I kind of read twenty-one and twenty-two, I kind of said, well, that seems to cover all the concerns that are sitting around. Am I reading this correctly, or are you looking for additional stipulations?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Geltzer, I'm sorry, make that clear. No, those two stipulations cover our concerns.
Okay.
And that's why they're there.
And then the second question I have is, on page seventeen of the PAD plan where they talk about the four-point-four million square feet, you said that include, if, if the high office and the mid-office go to one hundred and twenty-two feet and eighty-three feet, then they would be able to develop four-point-four million? Or is there an additional million square feet of office space that could happen? That's where I'm a little confused.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Geltzer, no, it would be the four-point-four million, and that includes the possibility to go to the eighty-three and one hundred and twenty-two feet. So it would not be in addition to that four-point-four.
So, so if they don't get that use permit, then they would be developing less off-square, office square feet, right? Because there'd be less stories?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Chairman Roffin. Just, just one comment on the two-point-one site conditions map on page five. It's indicated that there is a potential general aviation runway to the west of the existing runway at Phoenix Goodyear Airport. I don't know where the airport is with the master plan, but that does raise some concerns for me, that we now have an airstrip moved more in alignment with what is currently the seventy-five DNL and may, in fact, expand the existing noise contours out and change the use, usage required within the property that, that currently exists today. So I guess my question, I'm trying, trying to paint this picture to see if I can say this right. Are the development activities that are occurring on the Wood property in, taking in consideration the master plan and activities that's occurring at the Phoenix Goodyear Airport?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, you know, I'm going to defer a little bit of that to the applicant, possibly to Harvey. It's my understanding is, is the answer to that is, the PAD has incorporated and considered that expansion, and I believe what's shown on the development plan is one of those options that are currently under consideration for the expansion of the airport. But I'm not, beyond that, I'm going to be guessing.
Okay. Because that, because ultimately, that, you know, if you have to get FAA approval to build building heights of a certain height, then all of that would be contingent upon the condition at the time that those permits are requested. So I'm just throwing that out there.
I sit on the, on the Phoenix Goodyear Master Plan Update Committee, whatever you want to call this thing. And yes, the runway to the west of, of the current runway is a potential forty-five-hundred-foot general aviation small plane runway. However, that is option one of three options that are being proposed, and from my understanding, that is the least desirable option that at least the city of Goodyear is, is talking to Phoenix on.
Are the other two options also to the east of the runway?
The other two, the other two, the other two, the second option is looking to buy land to the northeast of the, of the Phoenix Goodyear Airport, and yes, that runway would be there, but there would be commercial plats, aviation, aviation, commercial, industrial lots being sold. And the third alternative has a runway to the southeast, and it would, it would, it would not interfere at all. But neither, either plan doesn't, would not interfere with what the Woods are proposing from a height point of view.
Just throwing it out there, because, but no matter what happens, at some, some point, should those runways become active, the existing noise contours would expand out.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, clarify the one on the runway, the FAA, we're looking at a maximum height of one hundred and fifty feet for a building height, so I think we're well under that in terms of impact from the operations, no matter where the, where the new, the new runway is. Then you have the issue of the noise, and it has to do with more the operate, the type of operation, it's more so than the runway. Of course, residential is not recommended, so you don't have residential or other noise-sensitive land uses. And, and in other studies I've seen with noise contours, depending on whether, how you change the operations, usually the noise would tend to, if you change it, usually it's not at the, at the, where the runway is, it's more towards the end of the runway and it'll kind of spread out and elongate. Probably more of the impact would be to the south rather than to, to the middle of the property. So I wouldn't, I would anticipate the noise contours encroaching, and even, and as I indicated, even if it did, you wouldn't be dealing with noise-sensitive land uses.
Okay. All right. That was my concern, so, thank you. Thank you all.
Other questions or comments?
I have a comment question, Bob. Bullard Avenue at the south parcel dead ends into dirt. You know, Sun NP's dirt. What are we going to do about that to develop this, because that has a major impact on connectivity? You know, I'll let the applicant answer it, but I'm sure that you brought it up with the applicant concerning this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Geltzer, I guess I will defer to the applicant in regards to that. Maybe I can ask you for clarification, you say dead end to the south?
No, dead end's to the north.
To the north.
To the north, and it ends in dirt.
I will defer to the applicant. The alignment and improvement of Bullard Avenue through this property and then the relationship of that through the Sun NP property, which is directly to the north, and the connection to Lower Bocai Road, has been a subject for the applicant and Sun NP and the city for quite some time. So I'll let him talk to you about, about those discussions.
Can't wait to hear the resolution of it.
I have a couple of issues, and I think one of them is related to Mr. Geltzer's comment regarding Bullard Avenue. I kind of broaden that issue to say that that's absolutely critical to be through from Australia Parkway to Yuma. Otherwise, the nightmare that somebody mentioned on TV last night that lives in Australia Mountain Ranch about traffic on Australia Parkway, if Bullard Avenue isn't completed and we have a ballpark and practice fields and this potentially four-point-four million square foot of office at full development, that if Bullard Avenue is not constructed at a fairly early stage all the way through from Australia to, to Yuma, there's going to be some very significant issues. Related to that is the access from the northern parcel to the southern parcel through a parcel of land which is not owned by the developers or the Wood family, and therefore, access between the parcels are really being held hostage by Sun NP and could be a real serious issue if everybody had to exit the north parcel, go out on Australia Parkway to come back into the, the southern parcel. Compatible development, or at least consistent development by Sun NP of that intervening parcel. And lastly, probably seven, eight years ago, I suggested to the city manager that he get together with Jack Loss, who's the general manager of the Insomet activity there on the corner, about relocation, because people in Australia Mountain Ranch were commenting about how attractive it was, and I suspect that the Wood family probably has similar concerns as they proceed with development. Mr. Loss indicated that he'd like to work something out for relocation, and it's amazing how we're talking about annexing, or, or at least extending the planning boundaries down to Mobile. And that was kind of where Mr. Loss was talking about getting some cheap land down there and starting to load the aluminum finds down there and watch the pile go down and, and move the equipment. Is there any information whatsoever from any discussions between the city and Insomet about the status of that project and the potential to move them with or without city participation? Because I know in the general plan, we put a, a transit station on the south side of that because the rail line runs right through there. And I think we planned that as community commercial.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commission, I know I worked on this early in my career here fifteen years ago, and they had a, as my recollection, they had a, they signed like a long-term lease in the early nineties for like twenty or twenty-five years. It's leased land, they're not the, they're not, they're not the property owner there.
Correct.
They just have a long-term lease and quite a bit of investment on that property. We have not, and to answer, simply answer, no, we haven't had any discussion about buying them out or relocating them. them out or relocating them. That's the short and simple answer.
Okay. Okay. I expect Mr. Jones may, may have some answers for me on those other issues.
Maybe before I turn over to Mr. Jones, maybe a little bit of information regards to Bullard Avenue that I do know. We've been working with Sun MP in regards to their planned area development application, which basically covers this area, you know, north of this application. And obviously that does involve the connection or, and the coordination of Bullard Avenue. The current plans have Bullard Avenue coming from this development, coming up and going along the Bullard Wash up to Yuma. And you, and Lower Buckeye Road would then tee into that. But there's been a great amount of discussion about particularly how to do that. Which one goes, which one tees off, how to do the, the bridge and the crossover over the Bullard Wash. But there is within the city as part of the Sun MP application, a lot of discussion about continuing that Bullard Avenue to Yuma. So that is definitely going to occur, just a matter in which manner, is my understanding. I'm going to add alternative rest of order to Mr. Jones.
Before, before you leave, to kind of follow up on the Bullard Wash and just forgive me for not really knowing this, but we've talked a lot about the Bullard Wash tonight and having it as a green belt in its connection. Are there any intergovernmental agreements? Are there any agreements with the developers as well as to how the Bullard Wash gets developed as a green belt? And if that is the case, is there any discussion on the development of Bullard Road as part of that green belt development?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bay, in regards to this particular application, the Bullard Wash area is outside their property. With the exception of a portion up in the corner where we may need some additional dedication within the Wash area. But the Wash as it exists today, you know, up along their eastern boundary is all actually, I think, ownership by the Flood Control District today. The improvement of that as an open space area, you know, I'd have to defer to Harvey further regards to and, and the coordination and the development of that.
That, that whole, that whole Bullard Wash around the airport's been channelized already.
Mm-hmm.
From Lower Buckeye down.
We, we had a intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Flood Control District, and it's a phased construction. And we started from the south end. So it's, it's already been channelized. It's more of a, and towards the southern end, it's not as, I guess, the best sort of inviting for users because it, it's adjacent to industrial land uses. So as it goes north and where it's abutting residential, we're talking about, about making it more green and open to park environment for, for residential use. So there's an incremental phasing. I think we're, we're getting ready. We're in the design of the second phase. So it's, and when we go north of the interstate as part of the West Core development, they'll be doing that portion and a north of West Core and what is known as Goodyear Plan Regional Center of the Open Sale. That's already been improved up there. So we're doing it incrementally.
Okay. Thank you. Just got to interrupt.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner Dustin Jones, I'm from Snell and Wilmer. And I, I must say, Bob, you, you make my life easier and, and difficult because, easier because you did such a very thorough presentation. You covered all the five slides that I had prepared. But then you also make my clients go, what do we have you here for? Because you've done all my work for me. But I wanted to take a little, a bit of time and introduce this project because it is an honor to be before you on behalf of Rose Property Southwest as well as the Wood family who have been working on this project for a long time. With me tonight from my office is Karen Keith, who has spent quite a few hours working on this project. We also have with us Jack Rose, who's with Rose Property Southwest, as well as John Rogieri, who's the Director of Entitlements with, with Rose Properties, who's worked on this project as well. We also have the honor of having the members of the Wood family present this evening. We have Margaret Wood Carl as well as Ken, who I believe is here, and then Pug and Pauline who are here. And I don't know who is the oldest or the youngest of the family, but I would suspect that, that Margaret is the sweet sister amongst the group regardless. I can take you back a few years ago to my introduction to this project. It was about three years ago when there was quite a few rumors going around about baseball coming to this area in the city, not on this site, but on adjacent sites. And there was quite a bit of discussion, quite a few calls that the family was receiving at the time. I remember receiving a call to attend a meeting with Margaret where there had, was discussion going on about how to plan their site, what to do with the Wood family property. The property, as you may know, has been in the family since nineteen thirty-two when their father, Ron, purchased the property for farming. If you can imagine this area in nineteen thirty-two, it was a bit distant from downtown Phoenix and Goodyear was much smaller. And I believe Margaret told me at one time that the property where the Phoenix Goodyear Airport is located was sold by the family. That used to belong to the family as well. And that was sold not to the airport, but to the Navy at the time back in the forties. So there's a lot of history for this property. The house where the children spent a lot of time is still there on Estraya Parkway. A lot of history, a lot of significance that this property had. Margaret, when she approached me, was talking to me about many of the developers that were calling her that wanted to develop this site and do something. And I remember going over to her house about three years ago. It was around Christmas time. And I had my four-year-old daughter with me. I remember climbing all over the kitchen table and eating nuts and things like that and disturbing Margaret's beautiful house and talking about the sentimental value that this property has to the family because of the history and how long it's been there. And they wanted to do something that would not just be another commercial development in the city, but something that the family could be proud of. It's a legacy property for them because it has such a history to the family and to the family trust. And so they wanted to do something right. So they looked for a development partner that would have a knowledge of the Southwest, that would have a knowledge of this area of the, of the, of the city and of, of the valley and want to also contribute and do something that would, would be of value and be of worth. And Rose Property Southwest was that, was the developer that was selected to work with the family because there was a pre-existing relationship and pre-existing trust there with Jack Rose and the Wood family. Right around that time, after the family started working with, with Jack on this project, John Rogieri came to the scene and was hired probably about two years ago. And he hails from San Diego from Project Design Consultants, which is one of the, is the, if you see on your application there, is one of the principal planners that helped put together this application. John had significant experience there, has over twenty-five years of experience of doing development and projects in California and other parts of the country and knows what he's doing. And so he came to this development with experience and understanding as to how to get a project like this out of the ground. So there was about a year of time spent in doing economic analysis, fiscal analysis, traffic circulation, trying to determine what the market would sustain on this site because of the family's desire to do something that would be an amenity, that would be, would be a legacy project that would have their family name on it here in the city of Goodyear. So a lot of effort went into that. About a year ago, after a year of analysis, was when we submitted our application in August of last year for this PAD application and began the review process, the first review and the second review process to develop this application. Around that time, as you may know, the city center project was going along as well. And in the, in the desire to not to get our project so far ahead that the idea and the concept of the city center would be in the background, we allowed for the city center project to catch up to our application because we could have been here quite, quite a few months ago. But the city center project process was one that the city really wanted to respect and allow for the commission. It's not, I think, a coincidence that we're right behind the city center coming to you. It will be right behind it going to city council. That was the intention of staff to help you all to see the vision for this area. Because this is right next to what many feel is the heart and center of the city, which is the city center. But we believe this project is the breath of air that will give life to that city center. And so there is a significance there as well. If I can have some help with the Elmo, I will go brief, breeze through, this is probably what I need, breeze through my slides quite quickly here because again, Bob has covered most everything that I would be covering. You can see as the staff has indicated the orientation of the site on the north side, the fifty-seven acres, as well as the one hundred and eighty-seven acres to the south side. Staff has been very, very thorough in describing the proposed uses, the mixed-use development on the north side and the business park type of development that could occur on the south side. Also has done a very, very good job of describing the development standards, the heights that would be permitted on the site as a matter of right and those heights that would be required to go through a use permit process to be able to go higher. And the color notations there describes the intensity. As you move to the center of the site, you get that greater intensity. But you can see this slide describes our design philosophy. It's a very pedestrian oriented type of development, particularly on the north side of the project adjacent to the city center. You can see the Goodyear Boulevard loop there on the north part that, that dissects that portion of the site and allows for that other portion to be regulated by the city center specific plan, but also bring some of that life and activity down through the site onto our, onto our site. And then you see on the bottom portion, again, the business park element as well as the commercial and the industrial as staff outlined. On that north side, again, to summarize the permitted uses that you see in your application, the site is intended to be a mixed-use type of development. It has a residential element that would be above the, above the retail. There are also other types of multifamily town, urban types of dwelling opportunities on that north side. Office, restaurants, entertainment, very, very active, active property adjacent to the city center and very consistent with the vision for this corridor. On the south, hundred and eighty-five acres, again, more of a business park type of concept. What you see here is a conceptual site plan that would show the intensity of the types of uses that would go along on this site. To note the, the heights that are in the, height development standards that are in the application, as staff has already indicated, along Estraya Parkway, the height, maximum height that's permitted along Estraya Parkway adjacent to the residential that's on our western side is only thirty-five feet. As you move away from Estraya Parkway is where you allow for the verticality to occur along the site. Design guidelines, because the project is again, near the heart and center of the city, the importance of the aesthetics was something that was taken consideration. And you should have received in your materials a design guideline book that's very, very comprehensive that outlines the standards, the development and design standards for this area. This, these design guidelines are unique and we take much pride in them, that they actually don't just speak to general design guidelines for the entire project. We speak specifically to the MXD area, what design standards should occur there, the business park, the commercial, as well as the light industrial. The standards, very specific for each one of the sites, not just your general fluffy language that says do good quality work, but actually gets into specifics about the types of development or design standards you would want in these areas. Some of the questions that come up with, are dealt with the Bullard Road as well as the Bullard Wash. I have to echo staff's comments. Bob came in and, and came in at the very end and clarified what I was going to say, is that we have had meetings with Sun MP with respect to the roads. Our project obviously will be completed to our property boundary. And Sun MP has a PAD application that they submitted about a month after ours in September of last year. And I believe they're coming to a close conclusion of that PAD. And I believe there's a development agreement that's being negotiated, Harvey's nodding, that addresses the continuation of the road from their property line all the way up to Yuma Road. And so we haven't had any discussions about the road ending at our property, not going anywhere, because the understanding is both property owners have PAD applications that are processing concurrently and each property owner will be responsible for their road. There has been some discussion about the crossing over Bullard Wash and how that will work. I believe there are stipulations, there's language that will deal with that as well. And we are not objecting to anything at, at this point with respect to those discussions we've had with Sun MP. And they're not here objecting at all to what we've negotiated with them. But those discussions are, are ongoing. We anticipate we'll conclude those very, very promptly. Looking to see if there's any other questions or comments that I may have left out. Bullard North-South Collector. Commissioner Horstman brought up the desire to have a North-South Collector or the, the need for a North-South Collector between our north property and our south property. We are not aware of what the final site plan will be for Sun MP's property in that area. I believe they have submitted an application to the city in their PAD and probably have a site plan that's being processed that has building elevations in that area, that little sliver that kind of comes in there. We will have to work with staff on that and make sure that there is the types of uses that would be appropriate and the types of connectivity that would be appropriate if a business park occurs there. Or as staff has alluded to, the discussions that have gone on recently about baseball. And I failed to mention that back in January is when the city came and said, we, we'd like people to respond for an RFI and see if baseball is suitable use for your project. We'd already been in this process about a year by this time and hadn't thought of baseball. But we put together an application and submitted a statement of interest to have baseball potentially work on this site. And after a few months back in March, as you may recall, the council took action and selected this site as a site for potential baseball spring training facility in the city of Goodyear. And over the past six, seven months, there has been much discussion at this, at city management level, working with the teams, this has come out in the press recently, to do just that. Because of that, we, we didn't stop our process because at this point, no one knows that that's going to happen. We'd all like to cross our fingers and say, yes, baseball will happen on the site. But we don't know that. But in the interest of protecting the family's interest to prove, to continue, continue processing the zoning application, we didn't stop it and put it in pause to deal with baseball. We're here before you tonight with our application, which we think is a valid and viable application for this area. And if baseball occurs, as staff has indicated, stipulation twenty-one will require us to come back and do an amendment to our PAD and address how baseball works on this site. And we have no objections to that stipulation twenty-one and coming back and doing that. Because obviously, at that point, if baseball's on the site, there's going to be a lot of detail that, that everyone on this commission as well as council is going to want to look at. So that amendment to the PAD would come back to the PNC and then on to city council at that time to address that concern. And the staff has also noted that stipulation twenty-two addresses the height concerns that, that the use, we will need to make modifications to our application prior to getting, say, council and that those use permits would have to occur in order to get the additional height. So we appreciate your time, appreciate you embellishing me and listening to the, the background, the history. But this is a very significant site for my clients, the Wood family as well as Rose Property Southwest. It's a significant property within the city, again, being that breath of air that will breathe life into the city center as the city center is kind of the heart, heartbeat and will give life to downtown city of Goodyear. This is a significant site and we appreciate your time and would request that you recommend approval to the city council this evening. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Jones, Mr. Geltzer.
Dustin, you, you talked about connectivity between the north and the south. If, if, I'm just going to toss this one out, where if you look at either the three point one development plan, this one right here, I assume you would have no objection to extending the road right where, where it comes up to the north and then makes an abrupt turn to the west. You would extend that road up into the Sun Chase plan so that you could hook up and they could hook up somewhere if they decide to build a road there or through that FL, F slash L dash one area?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Geltzer, with the plan that you have before you, this plan here is what staff has supported to date with this development plan. The discussions about bringing baseball obviously brings another element of traffic onto the site. And in those discussions with staff about potential for baseball, that's where staff said you might want to consider a north-south connector coming up from where, exactly where you're saying and going north. In that context of baseball, we conceded that's probably a good idea because you're going to have a lot of people coming in and out of there for the activities.
Okay.
And under that context, we, we've said, yes, that probably is the best way to deal with it.
But I'm going to say if baseball doesn't come, do you envision any kind of connectivity between the north and the south?
We, we haven't really explored it at length. I think one of our initial, initial site plans may have contained that. And then were directed by staff to move away from that. So our initial submit, Karen's nodding in the back, actually had that road going north and then it was modified. And this is what was the final site plan, again, in, outside the context of baseball occurring.
Can I ask staff, Bob, could you come up and address? Well, I, I'm just, I mean, I'm looking at it and saying, okay, there's an obvious spot for a linear road that comes straight down from Goodyear Boulevard south and, and goes through Sun MP and goes right into this project. And, and, you know, why are you recommending against it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Geltzer, I, you know, I haven't been involved in all the discussions relative to the Sun MP property. But I do know that in some of the discussions, Sun MP is not desirous of having that connection. In their development plan, they propose no connector street going south. And I think the other part of it is, is based upon the overall land use plan, circulation plan within this development. I think the city did not see that needed to be a connection that Bullard Avenue provides the primary access north-south, you know, within, through this development to Lower Buckeye Road. And there didn't necessarily need to be an internal connection between the two development properties between Bullard Avenue and Estraya Parkway.
Okay. This commissioner disagrees with that assumption. Thank you. I'll end it there.
Mr. Chairman, the, the staff doesn't oppose a north-south connection. And, and that, we've talked about it. The, the issue is where's it going to be and getting both property owners to agree on a location, which has been quite a chore to try to get them both to agree on the location of a north-south. So we don't oppose it in difference.
Well, I guess let me, let me put it this way. If the Wood property- If the Wood property gets approved first and there's two connectors, somebody's going to need to connect into it, whether they put a squiggly line or a straight line through, that's their issue. But I think we ought to be, I think that connector, there should be some kind of indication that there's a connector awaiting this PAD. City council's going to ask that. And if they don't, I'm going to bring it up when it comes before.
My feelings is the same. The more collateral circulation we can provide, the density that we're talking about here is unique. And because we, if we don't put it in here and we need it, we're going to be stymied. If we just say the expectation on the plans from Sun and P are that there will be a north-south connector, I guess Todd will get the message by reading the minutes or watching.
He's watching at home right now.
Hi, Todd. But that would be, quite frankly, that would be my expectation when that PAD comes in, is that there's a north-south connector. And I agree with Mr. Gelsner that if it's not there, you know, I think this applicant has done 90% of what's needed and in the north portion, you've got a north-south route and the potential to connect just east of the C on page 13 to provide that north-south access.
Mr. Chairman, they're showing a north-south to the north of Lower Buckeye Parkway, but nothing to the south, so there wouldn't be any connection to the south. So if you want one from the southern parcel of the Wood up to, through Sun and P, then you need to stipulate that they need to have a north-south collector.
Well, and I think the discussions that we've had is, you know, this stuff is conceptual, so, you know, we haven't got a surveyor out here laying out where this road belongs. But I think I would support a stipulation that recommends a north-south.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, I would allow John Richiari to speak to this, because I know he has had meetings with representatives from Sun and P about these very issues about the connectivity. So I'm going to turn the time over to John to address some of this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, the way that this plan shows the circulation anticipates at the level of development that we are proposing, according to the traffic study that we have prepared, that we meet all the city's guidelines of level of service. We have been reluctant to make a connection to the north, because we understand the type of development that we intend on developing. I have no idea of what's going on to the north of me, nor do I control the type of development, the land use, the intensity, nor the design guidelines. And so we do have a concern about integrating the two developments if we do not need an interior collector because we meet the level of service. If, however, we are directed to do so by stipulation or staff, we certainly would consider doing that. But I just wanted to clarify for you that we did go through the technical studies to address the issue. And if we are to make that connection, I would hope that there would be some reciprocity to protect our interest in that transaction.
The way I look at the intervening parcel is very much the same way that we've looked at interparcial access in the commercial projects along Litchfield Road and Estrella Parkway, that it just doesn't make sense to force people to go back out onto an arterial to go back into another commercial area. It's, there's a safety issue, there's a traffic volume issue, the traffic studies all well and good that we've done that, and I appreciate the fact that your circulation plan does provide level of service at the intersections that would meet the city standards. But to the extent that we have an opportunity here, I certainly am sensitive to the fact that I'm not sure that I want to have connection to something that may be box warehouses. But I'm not sure what Sun and P has proposed either. The staff is working on that. My expectations and what they bring forward, again, Todd, I hope you're watching, is that the project will be compatible, that the circulation will allow for collateral circulation, and that your interests will be protected.
Can I make a follow-up comment? I've attended most of the city center meetings and Chairman Horstman I know has also, and one of the things that has been promised to the citizens who live south of Goodyear is with the development of the city center, are we going to have more and more traffic on Estrella Parkway? Well, the promise has been from the city that the, and for this whole project, that most, much of the traffic will be diverted up Bullard Avenue. Okay, so if traffic is diverted from Estrella Parkway to Bullard Avenue, there is still no way to get from your project to the north part of your, from the south part of your project to the north part of your project, or to whatever Sun and P is building that is between the two projects. And we're not going to allow development to happen that is two isolated islands that is not connected by some kind of linear path to get through it. It's just not going to happen. And you are doing yourself a disservice. I mean, you have a fantastic project here. You have something that I have been trying to see at the city since I moved here. And when I saw this project and read what you're trying to do, it's like, wow, this is really great. Okay, this is one of the key things that you need to do.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gelsner, thank you for your comments and observations. As I stated before, if you choose to put in a stipulation that directs us to make a north-south connection, we would certainly do that. Because we did not know, nor could control, that north-south connection, what we have done is we made the connection back out to Bullard, if you look at the circulation plan. If you direct us to go to the north, that would allow us that north-south connectivity through the projects that you and we seek, and it would, in effect, mitigate our need to have that additional roadway come out to Estrella. So I would ask that as you form the stipulation, that there is some flexibility in how we approach the connection, but we would seek to make that connection either at that point or at another point to be able to be successful going north and south and work with the developer to the north of us.
John, I don't want you to give up the connection to Australia. I think you need to be able to bring traffic in off Australia. I know this is, this is going to take up, you know, a path of 100 feet and it's so many acres and we're going to lose some square footage. But I'm sure that it's going to make for better traveling and for an executive to get to his business a lot easier, you'll sell it faster.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Only thought that I have on this discussion that we're having right now, and I guess we need to run this by staff as well, the importance here is that if we stipulate that that road runs north and south, then staff is obligated to work with Sun and P to assure that that occurs.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I've had extensive meetings with Sun and P on this and they are agreeing to dedicate a right-of-way, a north-south right-of-way through that middle piece to ensure connectivity to the south. What I need, if you want to ensure connectivity to the south, you need to stipulate that a road has to come up from the south, because their development plan does not show one at this time. They do not intend to do it unless you stipulate it. So I think baseball might require it, but if baseball doesn't happen, then what you're saying is you want one anyway.
We want it anyway.
So if that's the case, then you need to require it.
I've handed a drawing to Mr. Jones if he wants to put it up on Elmo and make some comments.
One other thing is, we don't need to get into the specifics of where that needs to be, because it's very complicated, because there's already two existing.
That's fine.
Midian openings right now. There's some other design issues that need to be taken into consideration. Sun and P's done lotting studies and it's got even a site plan between the two parcels. So that's where the rub is and that's where the challenge is, is finding a location that works. But if you give us the direction.
How do you want to stipulate, do you want us to say there needs to be a north-south stipulation through area F/L-1 and leave it at that?
That would be fine.
Okay. I'm going to recommend that, the motion.
Gee, is it a gay?
No. That was Sun and P ID card.
Any other questions or comments?
Closing remarks?
No, Mr. Chairman, we support the stipulation with the flexibility to locate that road.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Family?
I'd like to say I was born on that park.
Twenty to thirty years ago.
You know, the name is really cool. We need a good corporate park and the Wood Corporate Center will be a great addition to the city of Goodyear.
He could add that he was born on July 15 without any electricity or running water.
You get a sense of the sentiment, connection to the property.
Absolutely. Last call for speakers. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for commission's disposition.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of case 05-200-00017 to request rezoning of approximately 240 acres as the Wood Corporate Campus with 23 stipulations, and the 23rd stipulation should be for a north-south collector road through area F/L-1. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion of the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One more step in the long road.
Good stuff, guys.
Staff communications.
A couple announcements, it's been kind of alluded to this evening. Monday, this coming Monday, the 25th, the staff has on the agenda, first item on the regular agenda is council consideration of adoption of the city center area plan, inviting members of the technical advisory committee to attend and all recognize their contribution. You're welcome to attend, of course, or you can watch it on the internet.
Monday.
Monday, the 25th, at 6 o'clock.
Recognizing the people that worked on it.
Yeah, the city center technical advisor. I think we have one in the audience, the someone who works here. Everyone knows. We have a special meeting on October 4th. We're going to have a lot of meetings here coming up, so I'm sorry. Get you all ready for the holidays, I guess. On the special meeting on the 4th will be just our normal agenda items, because on our regular meeting on October the 18th, we will have the public hearings for our major general plan amendments. There are six or seven, I don't know, seven? And that includes the Sonoran Valley one. So that, the location of that meeting will be at Estrella Foothills High School down in Estrella Mountain Ranch, which I'm sure the people that, the two members that live in Estrella Mountain Ranch will be having. We'll try to eat down there, if there's a restaurant down there.
Come on over to my house, we'll barbecue.
Can you send us a map of that? You know how to get there?
How to get to. Yes. You can't really miss it.
On the left-hand side, past the golf course.
Well, everything's down.
Google it.
I think since most of the items, well, Joe said, well, maybe we should meet up here, but I'm thinking that most of the items are down south and we might as well meet down south and then go from there, I think. So we'll get the logistics to you, so. Then we have another meeting, November 1st. That's first Wednesday of the month, that's to handle the normal agenda items in November, because at the regular meeting on November 15th, we'll have the second public hearing on the major general plan. You're required to have two public hearings at two different locations, so the second public hearings will be located right here.
But that's when we'll vote on everything, isn't that?
And that's when action can be taken. I also have, that's so then we have the 1st and the 15th, but, as an, but no, but there's more.
A bonus.
A special bonus. Yeah, I, at the request of someone, I won't say who, November 9th, it's been suggested that I have another public hearing just for the Sonoran Valley since, due to the size and magnitude of it. And that would be down in Mobile, down in Mobile Elementary School.
The 8th or the 9th?
That would be the 9th, it's on a Thursday.
Should we all wear our jean shirts?
You can wear whatever you'd like.
You can pick your quad to get there.
Well, what I was, we've, tentatively, it's down the school, we have, if we leave here, it's going to take, you know, an hour, 20 minutes, maybe, you know, depending on when we leave, it'll probably be about an hour and a half to get there, an hour and a half to get home. So if you want to leave earlier and not meet at 7, maybe meet down there at 6, we'd have to leave, you know, city hall around, well, to be sure, 4:30 or something like that, if that'll work for you. So I see a lot of happy faces there down. I think it's important you go down there and see it. I mean, you really can appreciate it. I got the opportunity to fly over it this past, we had a helicopter that APS had.
Let's do that.
That's really nice. That's a lot better way to see it, by the way. So I think you need to meet the 120 residents down there.
Enjoy them all, right? By name.
I've met some of them.
You're going to welcome them to Goodyear.
Welcome to Goodyear. So that's November 9th. What's your pleasure in terms of the time? Would you rather have it earlier so you can get out earlier and come home earlier?
Yeah.
I knew that would probably. I'm willing to.
Is that a Wednesday?
It's a Thursday. Will that work? We'll take the bus and we'll even feed you.
Take the bus.
See, Ouchie's on the bus, right?
Ouchie's on the bus. Well, we have to pack a lunch, because there aren't any restaurants down there.
You said the October 4th meeting was a special meeting because of disload or?
Yeah, because of the agenda, because of the 18th meeting, we have seven of those major general plan public hearings and if we, if we have all of our items on the 18th, we'll be here a long time. That's why I'm dividing it up into two meetings, just to make it easier.
Harvey, could you ask our corp, the commission secretary to send us an email with all the meeting dates that are going on between now and the end of the year so we can get them onto the calendar?
Yes. And then, yes. And then a final one that the chairman asked me at dinner, suggested, and I think that was a good suggestion, is our regular meeting is December 20th, but instead of December 20th, he suggests. December 20th, he suggested the week before, December 13th, so we're not in conflict with any holiday festivities. So if everyone's okay with that, we can do that. So we don't have one meeting in December. We wouldn't have a, we wouldn't need a, I would hope we wouldn't need another meeting in December. So that's two in October, three in November, and one in December.
And then the commerce.
I got three in October.
What?
And the commerce meeting.
Oh, and then the other issue is, we have the, Department of Commerce has its annual boards and commissions training in Phoenix. And if you haven't signed up, sign up through Joe. And that's Friday, November 3rd. And we'll drive you there. Includes, I think it starts at 9 to 4. Comes with lunch. It's usually pretty good. They have some good speakers. So gives you a good overview of some issues. So if you haven't signed up for that, encourage you to do. Also, if you want to join Arizona Planning Association, you can get the magazine and become a full-fledged member, card carrying APA member. You can do so and just let Joe know. So other than that, we also have, I think that's it, I guess. Unless you have any questions, I mean. That was probably enough meetings to do.
Yeah.
Pretty working out here.
Is this an appendage to documents we already have, this city center?
That is, that is the final draft that is going to the city council for adoption Monday night. I thought you'd like stopping.
Plan plus amendments.
Okay.
Plus attachments.
Right. Remember, remember when we presented it to you, there was the plan and then we had this laundry list of Radishier changes you adopted that.
Yes, yes.
This represents incorporating all those changes into this document. So that's the document we have. I think it's not really.
No, this is just appendices.
It says appendices.
This is not the document itself. It says appendices, but.
Appendices C through F.
Just in addition.
Yeah, we have not gotten the final, final plan.
Inside it says.
Will we get a copy when the city council approves it?
It says it's, it says specific area plan on the inside.
It says appendices.
Right, appendices C through F.
This is not the plan.
Yeah, that's not the plan. You're right.
It starts with F, right.
Oh, you're kidding. That's not the right thing.
It was the disc.
What's that?
That's not what.
That's not the right, that's not the plan.
Okay.
This is just the.
I gave you the plan to have a copy. Remember to get.
I got the disc, had about one. Anna said we'd give you my version of the disc.
That's not the plan.
Okay. Do you want these back?
We'll get it to him Friday. We'll get it to him.
Okay.
This is the appendices.
This is still the part of it. This is part of it. We just don't have part eight. Okay, all right.
Packets goes out tomorrow.
This says C through S.
You call anybody.
So we don't have A and B either. We don't have the plan and A and B. Okay.
Yeah.
So this is C through S. There's no A and B and there's no plan.
That was supposed to be the plan.
Okay. That was a great plan, Harvey.
No further business, I will entertain a motion to a.